Do some good with it.
That's awesome. Cool. Thanks for that. Okay, it's nine oh five. I'll open the public hearing on the proposal to vacate and convey a part of two ninety street within Montrose Township. Anybody received any comment?
I haven't.
You have the one from Alliant Energy?
Yeah.
They were concerned about the right of way.
Yeah.
They just wanted some order.
Make sure they have rights to use the right of way.
Okay. And it got put into the resolution and...
Well, I don't know.
I don't do so. They requested specific language that the county grant them an easement. Um, most of it is necessary.
Okay.
Um, my crazy...
I was gonna suggest, I could speak to that too. I didn't mean to interrupt. But yeah, apparently they contacted Sherry. Um, and I advised that if they wanted to be heard on the issue, that was the reason it was set for a public hearing. Uh, they could bring it to the board as well as the proposed grantees and the resolution if they wanted to be present for the public hearing, uh, to bring it to the board.
Alright.
So, and that we weren't gonna, uh, mingle with it or mess with it unless they wanted to bring it to the board's attention. It would've been a board decision. It doesn't sound like anybody's there.
Um, I don't see anybody in the room, um, or is anyone, one online from Alliant Energy? Nope? Okay.
On that issue, I would just add to what Ross said. I didn't realize he was on. I would let him start. Um, the prescribed easement would provide provisions that because they've been there for a very lengthy period of time, that, that there would be an easement, though it's not recorded. Um, and further, I don't know that we can grant an easement. We don't have title to the property.
Oh, yeah.
This action is vacating a road right of way that exists in the form of an easement. I'm not sure you have the authority to give an easement on somebody else's property.
Right. No, probably not. Okay. So if they want to pursue it, they still can, I suppose, or with the property in there, right? Not us.
Yeah.
I think you said since they've had it historically, that we can assume that that easement will continue without any kind of formal notation.
Resolution that this is subject to prescribed easements in that term. It's sort of similar, if you've heard of that first possession, when you're talking about actual title of the ground. If you occupied it openly, the legal language is notoriously for the ten year period, then you would be granted property rights.
I think I ought to get a motion to close the public hearing.
So... No, second that.
Gary and Chuck, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion raised. Number five is consider approval of resolution vacating and conveying a part of two ninety street within Montrose Township. I'll take that. Motion for that.
I'll vote.
Second.
Chuck, many discussion? Okay. Resolution. Uh, Holmes?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Nicely?
Aye.
Crazy?
Aye.
Motion here is... Number six is domestic violence prevention month proclamation. Number year, yeah.
Handouts here. Hi, my name is Alta. I'm the Director of Community Engagement and the incoming co-executive director for the agency.
Hi, I'm Molly. I'm the Development Coordinator for D I P, our D I P.
First, I want to apologize. Usually we have our facts and stat sheet, but my seven-year-old was not letting me leave the house, and they're on my kitchen table, so we will be emailing them to you. He really wanted me to stay at this point, so I apologize for that. That is, that's on me. Um, we just wanted to take a couple moments to, first, thank you all for your support, uh, victim survivors, uh, share a little bit of those, uh, data pieces. And then also invite everyone to a couple events we have coming up in Lee County. Uh, tomorrow, October eighth, we have our Shop for Safety, and that's our in-kind donation drive that provides, uh, items for victim survivors here in Lee County, uh, for about six months. So we get quite a few supplies, uh, everything from diapers and formula to, uh, non-perishable food items and, uh, gift cards to help us purchase gas for victims, those types of things. That'll be at, uh, the Fairway and Hybe's here in Lee County.
In Fort Madison, Niki, I guess?
Yep.
Okay.
And then on October nineteenth, we have an event that I'll let Molly share a little bit about.
Yes, we're super excited. So I'm sure everyone's heard of Fat Jimmy's. They are opening up on a Sunday for us. We are going to be doing, um, Smoking for a Cause. So we are going to be doing some beef barbecue, and, you know, proceeds, part of the proceeds will go to victim survivors here in Lee County. So I believe that's from twelve to four, live music. It's absolutely beautiful out there. I'm sure you've heard of that. So we would love for everyone to come join us. They did recommend, um, reserving tables.
Okay, so that's this Sunday?
October nineteenth.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, a couple weeks out.
Okay.
And, uh, they will have football on inside, music outside, weather permitting, so trying to meet everybody's needs, as we like to do as an agency. But, uh, we're super excited to be partnering with them, uh, for domestic, uh, violence awareness month. So, um, some of the numbers that I'd like to share with you all is just about the folks we've served. Oops, wrong button. Here in Lee County, we have assisted two hundred and fourteen individuals with domestic violence and sexual assault services. Hundred and ninety-eight of those have been domestic violence specific, uh, and, um, we've helped a hundred and eleven folks here in Keokuk. And then, um, Fort Madison has been seventy individuals, so quite a few folks that are getting services from our advocates. We have a DB and a SA, so domestic violence and sexual assault specific advocates that serve those individuals that reside here in the community.
Or were those numbers, this year's numbers or all time?
So FY twenty-five. So our, our year-end runs, uh, July first of twenty-four to June thirtieth of twenty-five. And we sort of, that way, runs on our fiscal year, so we track. Um, we don't do a calendar year specific for those stats, so that is just for one year. Um, I'm happy to email the total, uh, since we started services here in twenty thirteen, though, for you. Just take me a minute to get together and happen to... We're happy to answer any questions about our services or the needs of victims here in Lee County, if you'd like.
Where is your office?
Um, we can't disclose that because it's a confidential location, um, but we do have, uh, space here that our advocates, uh, work out of. We do a lot of meetings in public locations, both at the libraries, Fort Madison and Keokuk, as well as meeting folks where they feel safest. So that might be after church, that might be at a, you know, where they drop their kids off, just that sort of thing.
I'd just like to thank you guys for all the work that you do. When you're looking at two hundred and fourteen, if you think about that, you put that in the scope of three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. Uh, this sends chills, chills down my spine. The other thing that I, you know, when we're talking about domestic abuse and we're talking about, uh, re-victim advocacy, a lot of times there's children involved.
Yep.
Uh, in that, so they're the secondary, uh, victims a lot of times to those actions. And, uh, that's something that we really need to work on in Lee County and have been trying to work on, uh, over the years. But, uh, this domestic violence and child abuse and, uh, we put right hand in hand.
Yeah.
And so I just want to thank you guys for the work that you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support. Uh, we are, uh, doing some active fundraising to help support some prevention education services for youth, uh, around dating violence and just letting kiddos, you know, junior high and high school know, um, what good, healthy relationships look like.
Sure.
Uh, that is the thing that doesn't get talked about enough, and so that's part of the curriculum we are working on. We received a federal grant for our youth advocates to be able to provide those services throughout our eight county service region. Uh, so we have their salaries paid, but, you know, gotta entice those kids with all sorts of fun things like candy and prizes and that sort of thing. And so we are working with Two Rivers Bank as well as the Community Foundation here to, to get some funding to support that program.
Where does your funding primarily come from?
Um, fifty-four to fifty-six percent of our funding comes from state and federal dollars. The rest is from individual donors, community foundations, municipalities like yours, that type of thing. So we give that specifically you, but our, our counties we serve.
How many counties do you serve?
Eight counties here in southeastern Iowa. So, uh, our northern tier is Cedar, Iowa, Johnson, and Washington. So Williamsburg over to Tipton and, um, and then our southern counties are Henry, Des Moines, Amheron, and Lee.
If you know, just out of curiosity, where do we rank in that group?
What, what do you mean?
I'm almost afraid that...
Rank, rank in which way?
Dollar support.
Dollar support?
For counties.
We, we don't receive specific funding from the county. Uh, the Community Foundation does provide support for us.
Do you receive funding from other counties?
We do, yep. Um, Amheron, Cedar.
How much funding from some of the others?
Uh, anywhere from, I mean, I, obviously Johnson County would be the highest. We have a number of grants from them. Um, and they help fund our emergency shelter, which is the only emergency shelter for our eight counties. So that's a, I would, that's over hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, and then, uh, anywhere from two thousand to fifteen thousand, depending on the county. And obviously the size of the population.
Maybe we should keep that in mind at our next, next, uh, budgeting process.
You don't get a break either, of course.
Yeah.
Are we the only of the eight that help contribute?
We are not the only, but one of the few.
Could you somehow contact us in January when we're looking at the budget and remind us that you would be interested in that some funding?
Sure, share, um, one of the things I can provide when I send that letter is a breakdown of sort of how much is subsidized by the other programs, which I think helps give some perspective to that, just...
Is it per capita or what, by the other counties?
I, to be honest, I don't know how they come up with their numbers. Uh, they have me come in present and talk about, you know, how many hours we're providing services and, and what that looks like. And then determine based on their budget and what's, what's up.
I can put something in my basement and ask.
I'd really encourage you to, to do that, especially since we rank not great. When it comes, when it comes to child abuse and things like that, there's a direct correlation here. And so if we're not, obviously we're not. We should be. That's why I'm glad you guys can really ask these questions.
Yeah, no, thank you so much. We appreciate that, yeah. I, uh, forty-eight percent of, uh, the, the homes with, uh, domestic violence usually have child abuse in them. So it's, it's about half of those that, that it's expected. So pretty strong correlation there for sure. Um, but yeah, I'm happy to send information. I'll put it on my calendar before I walk out of the door.
We like that.
Yeah. Thank you all so much. We, we appreciate this community's support. Uh, it's a, it's an important thing. And I, Lee County was one of the first counties I started working in about nine years ago, uh, coming down and chatting with you all. So I just, I personally have this on my spot, so thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, can we get a picture? I'm so scared. I can just pop behind you and, yeah, somebody take that.
Yeah.
Of course. Molly, do you hear?
Yep.
Should we slide here?
Slide.
Somebody want to take a picture of her photo? Yes.
Sorry.
Can you see there?
Oh, you're sorry here.
Come taller now.
My social media.
I saw one of it. Yeah, I don't know. I saw one.
Yeah, and I forgot when I was in Washington.
Uh, usually.
No?
Now the smile was...
Thank you so much.
You know. Thank you. Okay. Number seven is public input. If anybody has anything they want to discuss with the board that is on the agenda. Stan?
Stan Thomas, Franklin. I've lived in Franklin since nineteen sixty-six. And during that time, the roadway street was maintained by the, the city. And, uh, the eight blocks there was in pretty good shape. But when you get to the northeast corner of Franklin, the one J fifty-six out to, to eighty. I would like to have the board supervisors go out there, set your cruise at fifty-five and drive that because it is a thorough ride. It's blacktop. Ben knows how, how it's kept up.
It's not blacktop, it's a seal code road.
Oh, seal code, okay, sorry. Yeah, you're right. Uh, and all that's ever been done is patch on a patch on a patch on a patch. And I've had numerous people ask me why something can't be done. And I know Tim has the budget of them and things like that. Here a few months ago, there was a, seemed to be like a horse out on the first culprit coming back from two eighteen. And Tim was in the office and I talked to the gal, and the guys did come out and put some, a cold patch, you know, kind of smooth it out because it was ahead of the dip. But, uh, people keep asking me, what are we gonna do? What are you gonna do? Well, short of getting a petition, which I am not opposed to getting a petition, but I don't want to get a petition. I'd like to ask you guys to look into this and see if it can be, uh, what do you call it? And when you come in with the, uh, well, it's a giant tiller. I know Ella Pilling does our work out there. I got a tilling machine. You come in, you till the whole thing out, pull it back out, and then you seal code over. But anyway.
Reclaiming, so Stan, did I hear you right? You said the northeast part of town?
Northeast corner, J fifty-six, yeah, going out to two eighteen. But...
So do you mean northwest?
Northwest. I said northeast, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's a twenty-five mile hour speed limit. I wouldn't recommend anybody currently at fifty-five miles per hour there.
That's fine.
Well, you said you started with talking about it's...
It's a twenty-five mile hour with the eight blocks two front.
Okay, and that's not what we're talking about?
No. That's been maintained by the city and then the county has, we received code over years. It's in pretty good shape. But it's the northwest corner town up to, to eighteen, the three miles. It's, it's narrow, and I don't have any objections to that because it's a, it's a fundamental road. And, but it's, it's been patched and patched and patched.
So that's a seal code road. So I would urge you not to compare that to a paved road.
Right.
That's a, that's a gravel road with a nicer surface.
Yeah.
That's what you get when you get a seal code. And this board knows well that I do not appreciate having that class of road in, in the county where not a lot of counties do.
Well, it was classified as farm to market, so it's been that way for years and years.
Um, so to repave it, um, how, how, is that mild?
Call it repaving, if you could just...
You want to resurface, does that work?
Verify, resurface, you know. I, I don't know what the answer is. You're the engineer and I'm just...
So we put a fair amount of money into it last year, and I think there'll be more this year.
You did some code work out there.
Right, and that's good.
You do big time.
So, um, we would need to get all the collards done and finish digging into the road, I think, before we did anything to upgrade it.
Okay.
How, how long is that section, do you think? I, I'm just off the top of my head thinking.
He said three miles.
As far as Franklin to, to...
So, um, you know, I suppose to do what you're asking, um, that would roughly be a billion dollars.
Yeah.
That, that's a very loose number off the top of my head.
True, true.
Been looking at what we can do on, um, the different seal code road and maybe bring that in the five-year plan. Uh, Johnson Street Road particularly is, is failing pretty rapidly. And that's what you get out of a seal code road, it's...
Yes, and we spend about twenty to twenty-five thousand every year just in the city streets. You know, and that's what you get, better than, better than pre-sap and gravel.
Um, that, that is an opinion. That I look at differently than you do and, and why you...
Yeah, that's what we usually do, appreciate.
Right, right. There are a lot of people that, um, didn't even mean to make a point a lot of the time for that.
Yeah.
Completely did not intend to do that. So anyway, I don't know where we are, Stan, but I appreciate your input. Um, and, you know, it's no issue except for the money part.
Correct. It's always, and a million dollars doesn't go that far. Yeah.
No, it's...
No, no, it is. I understand. But, uh, a lot of people have asked me, and, and I'd like the supervisors just to take a spin on it, see what you think.
I'm just wondering, is that in your five-year program at all, Ben? Down the line?
I am looking at, so we'll bring that right when we wrap up the budget, towards the end of January, we'll start working on our five-year plan. It's not in there right now. I am interested in, I talked to Gary about, uh, somewhat a method that we could try. We are looking at Johnson Street Road right now, which is, there are parts that are, that are failing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and, you know, Franklin Road might be heading for that. It does not have the truck traffic that Johnson Street does. Um, there's a project, an idea, a concept I've had where we would stabilize, like a mill, right, a type of machine you were trying to describe, with a, a twelve-inch base and add in like some probably cement. And then a, a form of, uh, seal coating, referred to as oddo sealing. I feel I'm losing the audience here. Um, that, I, I, it's an idea of a, maybe a stouter version of seal coating. And it would be something in between, not the two million per mile that they've been costing right now. Um, and there's a, I've learned of a project in Jefferson County, um, that they, I'm necessarily implementing. And I intend to sometime this winter check out the road as well as converse with their engineer about project costs.
A lot of people ask me, it's, you know, the road's narrow. Well, yeah, but, you know, it's hilly and everything. Instead of redoing the whole, just...
So the first thing we need to do is get all the drainage structures under the road, short of, rather than no sense in, um...
Yeah.
Remodeling your house if the basement is bad. So it's like that. And then, so we've been working on that with maintenance dollars. Um, it probably needs to have a subgrain, um, put on the road where you start losing the shape. That's, there's moisture that we're not dealing with in the rough structure. That seal code is probably about that thick.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, we've done that on the road going north out of Mount Hamilton. Um, and as well as in the Hickory Hills neighborhood, I don't know, that, that's one where the seal code was one hundred percent failed in two thousand and ten, I think. So anyway, I appreciate that. Um, these are discussions that we'll have, um, more in depth looking forward. Um, March timeframe, probably February to March.
Well, my main concern today is, please we get into it.
And we will.
And thank you for making us aware of this situation.
Yes, it's, um, especially in slick or snowy. It's, uh...
I know what you're thinking about. I've driven it. It's the way you say it is.
I've actually, we've actually got a farm just south of that on the gravel, and I've got a sister that's north of that. So I do travel that road. I know what you're talking about. But to Ben's point, uh, we do have, how many total miles of, uh, seal code? Twenty-six miles of seal code in the, in the county. And the problem again with that seal code is the maintenance piece to that is much more, I mean, dramatically more expensive than gravel. And so no one wants to see, and there have been discussions that I've participated in, no one wants to see a seal code necessarily reverted back to gravel. But a seal code will not be reverted to paved. We just simply can't afford it. That's, that's one thing. So there's, there's two options. We maintain the seal code we got to the best we can, resurfacing and doing some of the things that you're talking about. Ben looking into additional, uh, technology that's out there. Ben keeps abreast of that to a point every year, even more than that. Uh, he's working with other engineers across the state, uh, to do that. So what we want to do is hopefully we don't lose the twenty-five miles of seal code that we have, but we've got to be able to be judicious with our dollars. Uh, the one thing that I would say with the dollars, I don't want to get into a huge discussion on this necessarily. But I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say it anyway because it's, it's at the forefront of my mind, and I'm not poking fun at anybody, and I don't want to push on anybody. But, uh, the legislation that the state passed a year and a half, two years ago, that dealt with the, uh, speed cameras out on the highway, right? Those monies, dollar for dollar, absolutely could have been used.
That's right.
Exactly for the project that you're talking about, at no cost to the local taxpayer. So, uh, in fact, it's in the state legislation that it says that those can be used for transportation infrastructure in the county. So that roughly two million dollars worth of speeding, which is atrocious out there, and I know our deputies are doing a great job working that, and the troops are doing a great job working that out there. But the fact still remains speeding is crazy and atrocious out there on twenty-seven. And this road connects directly to Interstate twenty-seven and happens to be an intersection that had the cameras on it. And so I would feel I'd be remiss if I didn't bring that up because there is a way to do things like you're talking about and pay for them, which would make Ben's job much easier in the fact that he would have those dollars available. But for whatever reason, at this point, we, we do not have that ability to have that. Uh, but I just want to bring that up.
Well, that great crossing is, uh, you really gotta watch it.
You do?
It's one of the highest accident intersections in the county.
That's correct. Thank you. I was gonna add, you know, as a, um, to finish out the conversation since we've gotten into that part. Yeah, Chuck's exactly right. I, and, and we've done everything we can really for treatments for low-grade, uh, low-cost improvements at that intersection. We, we've reviewed it numerous times.
We've got a lot of signage out there in it.
Yeah, and, and that's one, one thing that is limited by a seal code on, where we have these, uh, intersections along the Highway twenty-seven corridor where it's been pretty bad. Not just this intersection, but that's probably tied for, you know, top of the list with J forty. That intersection is what to do when drivers are, most of the time, they do make a stop, and they go ahead and pull out and make a bad decision. So it's not necessarily more stop signs, although there's, there's always some exceptions, and we've had some circumstances where somebody did run that stop sign. Anyway, we can't put rumble strips. That's a, that's something we do a lot because that will tactically, you feel that in your grip and the steering wheel, and of course you hear it in case you, we all know about distracted driving, right? Or whatever. Whether that be a device or just in your own head, right? Those are engaged in the other senses to help somebody remember to stop. Um, we cannot do that in the seal code because we don't have the thickness to grab.
Well, it's hungry, that, what, two hundred yards, maybe?
A bit, but, you know, you need two strips spaced further back to that. So that's, that's one area where it would be nice to have, maybe send a piece of more further back to the east.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Anybody else? Is anybody online? Okay, we'll move on then. Number eight, discussion of possible actions for increased pay slash work hours for county veteran service officer and assistant county veteran service officer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you know, I'm Vic Conley, and this was, um, something that, I am a value-based person. And in the last four, three or four years, our efforts at the VA have dramatically changed. We went from not quite being where we should be to being one of the best VAs in the state of Iowa. And you guys know this, that, there's one reason for that. And she's sitting right there. And Josh isn't here today, but you know that personnel make all the difference in the work. So being that valued person, value-based person, I want to see them compensated for their hard work. It took us four years to get her pay up to where our former director was at. So that, that's where she's at right now. Now Matt has done the work on this. Um, he's a one-man committee within the commission. And he is, he has spent hours, uh, putting this together, and I'm gonna turn this over to Matt to let him explain it because I'm not sure I can explain those numbers, but Matt...
I guess I, I feel, I think you have this in your bucket, so I don't know if you've had a chance to review it, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on it. I mean, I think the, uh, the point of it is that, you know, Nikki is, is compensated, uh, forty seconds... I mean, I think the, the point of it is that, you know, Nikki is, is compensated forty-second in state of Iowa. And, you know, by county valuation, population, we're, we're twenty-second. And so really as a committee, we've looked at it and said, we, we want to see her compensated as the twenty-second largest VSO in, in the state. I'm a facts person and so you can see the facts of the last few years. What's being done in this office are doing a great job. They bring a tremendous value to the veterans that they serve, of course, but also to the county. And so, you know, there's a lot of numbers in here and I'm happy to explain any of them if you'd like me to. But, you know, really it's, it's about people and it's about the veterans that they're taking care of. And that's, that's why we're here. We're here because we believe we have the budget for this. If you look at, at the paperwork, we've returned roughly fifteen million or fifteen. We should return fifteen. We've returned about fifteen thousand on average over the last three or four years. And so we think that we would be close to being able to cover this within the budget. The reason we're here is we're, we're not positive that's gonna happen. And so we, we're here to, to make that pitch so that if it is an issue, I don't want to come back in May and say, yeah, hey, we didn't ask for this, but we're gonna be a little over. So that's why we're here. I would estimate, the reason fifteen million was in my head is, I would estimate that, that between July twenty-five and June twenty-six, the, the, the amount of payments coming into this county is about fifteen million dollars. So it's a big chunk that comes into the county and, you know, that's on a budget of, well, last year was a hundred fifty-five thousand. So I'm not sure, can't remember what our actual number is this year. So that's why we're here. And like I say, happy to answer any questions you have based on the information.
I'd like to, first, I want to make a motion that we support this plan by the VA Commission in raising both the hours and the wage for the VSO and deputy VSO. So I'm gonna make that motion to start with.
One second.
You've got a second. And then the, the next thing that I would say, just so that we're all plainly aware. What Matt is saying when I review the numbers is, when I'm looking at it, is that on average, they've returned the amount of money within their budget to cover exactly what they're asking for. I think that it is admirable and honorable and, and completely transparent. What this board is, is doing in that they're coming to us and asking us to say, hey, we believe we've got it covered. But if we don't, and it's gonna, if we go over by a thousand or two thousand, we may end up having to do a budget amendment, which I know our budget manager. Loves those.
I gotta look at Campbell Projects, do you mind?
Yep. So I just want to say that if there's a very stark, as Vic indicated, there is a stark difference in performance since Nikki and her team has come on. And the value that is added, as Matt has put out and is in his, in his paperwork, is that what we're seeing is a dramatic increase in veterans' ability to receive the funding that they have earned and deserve within the county. We're at one point two, one point three, one point a month.
Just shy of one point three a month.
Just shy of one point three million dollars a month right now. And I know that, talking with Nikki over the past, she has personal goals that are higher than that, much higher than that. So I think that I've indicated a couple of different times at a couple of different meetings, this is an old stat, but I've got it in here, that there are five hundred and seventy-one veterans receiving benefits within the county, which I'm sure that's higher now. There are roughly two thousand three hundred and twenty-five veterans in Lake County. That means that seven percent of the county population are veterans. And approximately only twenty-five percent of those, of that seven percent are receiving benefits, which means she's got a target rich impairment, right? She's got seventy-five percent of the veterans in Lake County she is attempting to reach. And she's asking for more hours to do that, one, and her team, Josh, more hours to do that. And I, I think that that's admirable and that's why I support this for.
I think we should add, she also sees veterans outside of Lake County.
Absolutely. She does.
And that's our job, is to reach out. We don't always have the right answer particularly. But our office and Nikki has, is the place for veterans with questions. That's the resource for the veterans. That's what we do. We, we help them through that god awful mess of paperwork through the VA and help them with appeals and what have you. So that's our job. Reach out to the veterans and we're getting more veterans. Our numbers are increasing annually. So we're, I'm proud of that. I'm proud of where we are. And I think the commission has done a very good job in the last few years, brings us up to date. So. Anyway, that's us.
Thank you very much. Okay, we do have a motion. One second. And I guess, Gary and I had this conversation that it's really not our job to approve what you guys are doing. But since it has a possibility of asking for more budget money, I guess we go ahead. Because usually, you know, you guys take care of this kind of stuff. We give you money, you figure out how to spend it. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Is there an effective date in this?
November first, I believe.
November first.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Moving on. Number nine, discussion and approval of City of St. Paul's resolution. Number one, relating to an election for the change in the lab use of the current one percent sales tax in the City of St. Paul, Iowa. And there again, this is not really our job, but Sherri, you're on, right?
I guess I'm wondering why is your chief in on it?
Okay, because I think it's just a formality. Yeah, they're gonna have on their ballot, they're gonna have wording that changes. Because they evidently pay for their sewer. So now they wanna.
And now they just wanna use it for.
Well, they're lawful.
Any law enforcement.
And I think in. Okay, okay. So I think in their paperwork that you received from the lawyer, it said it had to go before the board. Because it's on the ballot. Does that?
Where's that at?
Yeah, okay.
I guess she was caller one.
I was thinking she was caller one.
Send unmutted request?
Yep.
She's gonna have to step away, but.
Okay, that's the only reason it's on here, I think.
Yeah, because the way it's worded, discussion and approval relating to an election for change in the lab use. So I think we're just acknowledging the fact that it's gonna be on the ballot.
Yeah.
What if we don't approve it? Wouldn't make any difference.
I'll make the motion if it's a technicality that we approve it.
So Gary and Tim, any other discussion on that? She does have some chat. So was I right? It's just a formality that you got from the lawyer versus?
Yeah, she said yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who made the motion?
Uh, Gary and then Tim. Anything else, Sherri? Okay. Motion carries. Okay, ten, consider approval of a corrective fund transfer from Pioneer Cemetery to General Basic. What's that?
When I was working on cash balancing report, I noticed once to a general basic that we had a pioneer cemetery bill that was paid out of General Basic and it should have been out of the Pioneer Cemetery fund. And since it's was last year's budget, I have to do a corrective transfer.
Okay, we need to do a resolution, huh?
I make the motion that we approve the corrective transfer.
I'll second that.
Gary and Chuck? What's a resolution question? Cy?
Aye.
Holmes?
Aye.
Wondred?
Aye.
Nicely?
Aye.
Crazy?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider approval of change requests for credit for window lines on Lake County Public Health and E M S building.
Salute.
Second. It's a credit?
Yes.
Yep.
How can we oppose this?
Gary and Ginger. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
And this, motion carries. Twelve, consider approval of change requests for a roll-up door air infiltration kit on Lake County Public Health and E M S.
Salute.
Second. What's a roll-up?
It's a, it's a roll-up door.
It's a north facing door on the backside of the health department.
And what was the money on that?
In the York area.
Seventeen and a half, I think.
So we gave back and we took out, yeah?
Two to positive.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't see.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen, consider approval of Eastern Iowa Workforce Development Area Shared Liability Agreement.
Can I say a few words about that? I've received a page from Aranda, the executive director of workforce development. And she knows that we're gonna have some questions about this, so she's tried to answer our questions. So I'll read this information to you. First of all, she poses the question, what is the CEO shared liability agreement? She says this is a required document under Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And that's the act that lies within Title One of the Department of Labor that provides funding for Iowa workforce development. And it outlines how the chief elected officials, CEOs in each county within the local workforce area share legal and financial responsibility for W I O A grant funds. It ensures that all counties have equal protection and accountability for how funds are managed. Second question she poses is how does, does the county have to sign the agreement? I know that some of you may have been thinking, do we have to sign? The answer is yes, yes, and yes. Signing the shared liability agreement is mandatory for continued participation in the local workforce development area. If a county does not sign, it would be choosing to withdraw from the federally designated local area, which would, among other things, eliminate the county's representation on the workforce board, require the state workforce development board to redesignate local area boundaries, which is a lengthy and complex process that could possibly delay W I O A funding for the area. It would disrupt services to residents and employers in that county. In short, not signing would isolate the county from the regional workforce system and make it extremely difficult provide federally funded workforce services to its residents. Third question she poses is, has the county already approved the merger? Yes, it has. The CEOs met a week ago, Monday, September twenty-ninth. The merger of South Central and Mississippi Valley Workforce Boards. It merged into a single twenty-two county working area that has already been approved by all twenty-two counties. And the state workforce development board has also been approved by all twenty-two counties. This agreement is the next step in formalizing the merger and ensuring that all twenty-two counties are legally aligned as one region. Next question is, what if the county disagrees with something in the, in the shared liability agreement? Because the workforce area operates as a single entity under W I O A, all twenty-two counties must agree to the same agreement language. If the county has concerns or proposed changes, those changes would need to be brought back to the entire CEO group for discussion and a new vote at that meeting, and a new vote at that meeting. Individual counties cannot modify or adapt their own version of this agreement. Does signing the agreement change how local services are delivered? No, signing the agreement does not change or disrupt services to job seekers, workers, employers. It simply establishes legal and administrative structure that allows regions to function as one unified workforce area. So with that, I would move that we accept the CEO, the chief elected officials' shared liability agreement.
One second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussions?
Does that kind of have to or else?
Exactly.
Do you know that all the counties are gonna sign it or does she?
I don't know, but she's counting on it. I don't think we really have a choice.
We make the courage to, you know.
Yes, all twenty-two counties agreed to this merger, so I'm thinking they will agree to this shared liability agreement, which we've had before with this Mississippi Valley. We've already, this is a template agreement and we've already signed this agreement previously with this Mississippi Valley. There's really nothing new.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
You've just made Aranda's day.
Okay, fourteen, discussion and approval of bids for sale of seven twenty-one Concert Street, six twenty-five Morgan Street and seven fifteen Concert Street, vacant lot in Kiyoka through the bid process. Do I have bids or? Okay. All right, we got some, yeah. The one in the envelope, is that up for all three or?
I think, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They, they have emailed it to her.
Were these bids gonna be for all three together or can it be for one property and not for the other two or how are these planned out? They'd have to bid on all three?
No.
They don't?
No. She says no.
Okay. Okay. We have a bid from William Bryant, I believe it says, of Fairfield, Iowa, for seven twenty-one Concert Street. And the bid is sixty-seven thousand dollars. And a bid from William Bryant for six twenty-five Morgan, sixty-seven thousand dollars. Yeah, a bid from Brian Gable of Kiyoka for seven twenty-one Concert for eighty-two thousand two hundred dollars.
Eighty-two one?
Eighty-two two. Brian Gable again for six twenty-five Morgan, ninety-two two hundred dollars. Brian Gable again for the adjacent lot, fifty-two dollars.
Fifty-two dollars?
Fifty-two dollars.
Fifty-two dollars, not.
For the vacant lot.
Fifty-two dollars for the vacant lot.
For the vacant lot, yeah. Brian only did two buildings. He didn't do the vacant lot. Brian.
Bryant.
Yeah, Brian and Gable did, but Bryant, I can assume on your lot.
Okay, so are we able to have? That's what I was gonna say, when you guys have it on here.
Discussion approval.
Approval bids, okay, so.
I'd move to approve the bids from Brian Gable for each of the three properties.
All second.
Step two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's you.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, well, go ahead and vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Awesome. It's a long time done it. Thanks.
Standrep one for all your work, Sherri.
And Ross? Yeah, cool, okay. Fifteen was reports. We have the commission of veterans affairs minutes meeting, the receiving file. Sixteen was personnel actions, manual increase for one N T and two paramedics, a new hire, part channel N T, and a new temporary hire, audit group, temporary workshop.
Salute.
Second.
Gary and Ginger? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Seventeen is our commissioner committee reports. Erin, you want to start?
Uh, sure. So, uh, it's been a couple of weeks, so I think I put these down by day or something here. So, I had a cons, uh, went on a, was that the first thing? See, I guess it's all right, conservation tour on the thirtieth that several of us participated in. That was, was awesome. So I, I saw things again that I didn't realize the size, scope, or how they've been improved over the years. And I, I've got to be honest with you, the, our parks and our rentals and our cabin rentals and just everything that we saw was top notch. I mean, it's just, it's awesome. And the things that we're doing and the things we've got programmed for the future. Heather and her team is just doing some really great things. Taking into consideration, you know, that all the campers are getting bigger, all right? And there's certain key things they love to see, easy pull-throughs, you know, the concrete spots and all that. So, um, I'm just glad to see that they're being utilized and, and, uh, that things are going well. I think, we have the program up in West Point.
We have the hoop, yeah.
Yeah.
The Halloween hoop is our biggest one yet. Um, so we counted, so they, they count. We got over four hundred fifteen, but that didn't allow, that didn't allow for the, everybody who was already in the campground. And I think the twenty-five to thirty cars who were there before our staff got there.
That's just amazing.
So, it was huge, it was great. They had, I unfortunately wasn't there. Mom duty took over homecoming and stuff, but, uh, my team all pulled together, they said it was great. We had some vendors there, so, yeah, it was a great event. Really good event.
So, uh, did that, and then, uh, on, on Thursday, I had a, on the twenty-fifth, I had a four fifty-seven count meeting, uh, we did that. Uh, that went really well. We looked into a lot of different, uh, aspects. That's something that's ongoing work in the county that we're considering, uh, creating, uh, uh, the ability to have uh, that account available to the staff. Southeast Iowa Regional Planning Commission meeting had that on the twenty-fifth of September. Uh, it was just our monthly meeting, um, a lot of great information put out there. I can pull that back if anybody wants it. Uh, Miller Health Center meeting was on the second of October. Things are going well there. Uh, I can let Ginger elaborate any more on that, but there's no, we're just, status quo, we're just in that direction. The county health department meeting on the second of October. Uh, that went really well, and again, I'll let, uh, Ginger hit any of the highlights there. On Friday, I attended on the twenty-sixth of September, the Heron Bend ribbon cutting, uh, ceremony. And that, again, I just, knocking it out of the park. I mean, I just, I told Heather, you know, when it comes to a conservation, there are just, there's always a smile on my face when I go to conservation. You know, and I, I like, it's just nature, the nature of that department, right? Uh, that, you know, they get to do a lot of fun stuff and have a lot of, the value added to the community is, is really truly unbelievable.
And they're just obviously being very proactive.
They are, and forward thinking, yeah. Yeah, and so she's got a lot, a lot of dreams and a lot of things to yet to come to realization, and she's working for those goals soon. Kudos there. This coming week, uh, I think we've all got, I don't know who else is going to attend, but I'm planning on attending on Thursday, Connect Lee County Informational Forum, that's from four to six. Now, that's where basically the who's who in Lee County all get together and kind of give a two-minute shared of what you're doing and what's got going on. Hopefully they keep it to two minutes, because there's a whole lot of us there, uh, I think, well.
A lot going on, yeah.
Yeah, so all the government agencies are there as long, as well as, uh,
Like schools.
Yes, city schools, uh,
Championships.
Yeah, economic development groups, uh, yeah, just a lot of people. But it's, it's a great time to be able to get together and to do some networking, so again, good stuff there.
What time was that?
Uh, four to six.
Four o'clock on Thursday.
Yeah, four to six on Thursday. Um, and then Friday, are we still going? I was going to ask them, are we still going for Friday, for Canco?
As far as I know, yes.
So at ten o'clock, uh, I believe I've got a meeting on Friday, uh, and that's just to go over, after, uh, Ginger and I went through the courthouse, two weeks ago, three, two weeks ago? Two, three weeks ago?
Three, I knew that.
Three weeks ago?
Yeah, we did meet last week.
Oh, that's right. So it's probably three weeks ago now. We went through, uh, courthouse, we reported on that, and we did a walkthrough, uh, with Canco. Not costing them the county anything, but, uh, they have done some, a little bit of work, and so they want to meet, uh, as far as their thoughts on that walkthrough. So, uh, ten o'clock.
Right.
We're going to be there to talk to them about that.
Are they going to come and talk to the board then about their walkthrough?
Uh, I'd, likely, we, I think we get asked then to potentially.
I think possibly we can report on that, and then ultimately, we're going to be more than likely looking onto that process of letting a bid for actual plans and things like that. So that'll be a match, no, next natural step.
Yeah. Yeah, this is done in preparation for us looking at a request for, uh, proposal to actual look at the building, where it would cost the county money. Right now, it's not costing us a dime.
Yeah.
Nothing's, there's no money spent, it's just them giving their, their thoughts. But the knowledge we gain from them will help us in crafting a request for proposal going forward, what are some of the things we should be asking for in, in that. Uh, one of the key things that I took, and actually, this was Ginger that brought this up, this was not my thought process, but it absolutely makes sense. There's a big difference between a remodel and a, uh,
Renovation.
renovation. Give my hours. But, and those are two very distinct and different numbers, so.
Or renovation being much more expensive.
Right.
Following historically the, uh, architectural.
Well, it, it also opens you up to much more opportunity for funding through historical reservation grants and things like that.
Grants.
So, it's something to consider.
So for instance, that's one of the things that through Can, you know, when we talk to them, they're like, oh yeah, that's a different number. So in our request for proposal, we'd want to know what firm, not saying it would be, Canco could be anybody, but does that firm also research and help out with grants? We have a grant writer that, you know, for them, in their area of expertise, they may utilize.
That'd be desirable.
Yeah, that may be desirable for them. Is that the Keakuk building or the full five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, more of the, would that be for, uh, when we ask for an estimate, architect's estimate for both remodel and, uh, the, the.
Likely.
Yeah, I think in the, in our request for proposal, yes.
Restoration.
Restoration, yeah, you'd want.
Both quotes.
Right, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. So some of the knowledge we're gaining in, in doing these walkers and stuff is going to.
That'll help guide how we craft that, or if it would.
Right. Yep, so, uh, we got that, moving on through here, that's good. That's good. Why not? So, I don't know.
Why are you looking at the clock?
Well, I, I just, I, I'm just bringing it up in committee just because if I, I don't know. Are we doing anything with, or are we considering anything with the Z word?
Oh, I was going to get to that.
Okay, I'm not going to, good. And I'm going to, I'm not, okay, so, uh, that. That, that. I did have a call from a concerned citizen, but I think it's been addressed, and I think she's going to talk to the auditor's office. I think Ginger probably got the same phone call, that was yesterday.
I sent her some backup documentation via email as well, so.
Yeah, but it's been, and that's been resolved. It, and it had to do with voting, making sure that you have the ability to vote in Keakuk as well, voting in Fort Madison, it's my understanding, yes, we're going to vote. Um, yeah. That, that. Did we?
Stopped at the middle, that's.
Yeah, but. The last thing that I guess I would say would be, uh, I hope, I'm thinking next week, hopefully, I think we're ready on the opioid, several opioid-related topics, I believe will be coming before the board, uh, next week. I think four proposals. I think we're ready, we're ready for four proposals. One, one would deal with the, uh, Keakuk Homeless Alliance, their request. Uh, the other one would deal with, uh, the request for the Miller, uh, Health Building as far as space. Uh, another one would be for two different counseling groups, uh, to be able to be, uh, help fill that space uh, within the health department. So those things, I look for those to come before the board. There's already been articles written about them, I'm sure we've all been kept abreast of that, read, read the articles. Uh, but I, I believe those will come before the board next week is my hope. Well, somebody got a question for me on that?
All right, so a few weeks back, um, the insurance committee met to discuss a potential re-enrolling in the four oh one B retirement program. A year ago, we had met, and there was very little interest in it, but I can tell you, a couple of weeks ago, there was a lively debate. We were talking over one another and a great deal of interest in moving forward and, uh, developing a four fifty-seven B plan for, uh, Lee County employees, a retirement plan, supplementary plan that would supplement the IFRS retirement plan. And, uh, so we are going to be meeting again from time to time, try to move this process forward, uh, converting from a four fifty-seven B to, or from a four oh one K to a four fifty-seven B, which, uh, we, uh, would intend to discontinue the four oh one K. Currently, that four oh one K program is costing the county, I, uh, I'm sure I wasn't quite sure, but I think about eight thousand dollars a year. This four fifty-seven B would cost us initially, the first year, about five hundred dollars for the, uh, just to, uh, the initial fee, and then yearly after that, about four hundred dollars. So we could save well over eight thousand dollars a year. Uh, so we're going to be meeting again to try to, uh, move this forward. Uh, Erin has mentioned the ribbon cutting at, uh, Lee County Conservation for the new outdoor classroom. Um, it was well attended, beautiful day. And, uh, Heather's kind of reluctant to say much about this, but she confided in me that, uh, since she's been director, this is actually the first project that she's ever, that she's been able to see through from the very beginning to the end. Other projects that she's been working on these past several years were already, uh, in place and had previous, previously been started by the previous director, Nathan, Nathan Unsworth, I think was his name. So anyway, she's very, uh, proud that this is the first project that she's moved through from start to finish. It's a very attractive building. The building is several hundred yards east of the center itself, so if you haven't seen it, I would urge you to go down, take a look. Very attractive building, well-built, and I guess already hundreds of students have already used this classroom building for outdoor education. And we've already discussed workforce development, just a few additional comments. So the twenty-two E's, uh, twenty-two CEOs from the newly merged local, very workforce development board met a week ago Monday for the first time. Uh, the first item on the agenda was to elect a new chief lead executive official. We chose to elect a Jason Rota Bush, who, uh, is from Powashie County, and he has previously served as the CLEO for the South Central Workforce Development Area. Uh, CEOs then approved, uh, a motion to name the new local work, workforce development area, the Eastern Iowa Workforce Development Area, uh, which you've noticed here on this shared liability agreement. Uh, CEOs discussed a shared liability agreement and moved to have the liability of each county proportionate to the population of that county. With Mississippi Valley, the liability was equal among counties, which I don't think was quite right. So I think this is a more fair distribution of the liability. Uh, CEOs also discussed and voted, voted on other matters, including bylaws and appointing board members, board members to the E I W D A board. There will be nineteen members on this board, and the members have to be proportioned, uh, with restrictions that's placed by WIOA. Fifty-one percent need to be from the business community, twenty percent need to be from labor. The party affiliation needs to be fairly well equally distributed. And I think, uh, there needs to be at least one representative from, uh, from education, from the education community, and maybe something else. Uh, let's see. Oh, yes, the final one, C three status, which Mississippi Valley previously had, will carry forward the E I W A. So the new board will have its own local grant recipient and will have its fiscal agent services in-house, which will save them quite a few dollars. Let's see here, Thrive met last week. They discussed an, an action plan proposal for a drug-free community grant, a D F C grant. These grants are for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year, renewable for up to five years. Currently, this is what the Best U Coalition in Keakuk has, I think they're in their third year of this hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar per grant.
Just started their third year, yeah?
Third, third year. Uh, and Thrive members also discussed a, another grant, the Partners for Success Grant, which is a three hundred thousand dollar grant, which is currently what's keeping Thrive going here in Fort Addison. But the problem is, uh, last year, there were five hundred applications, only twenty-eight grants were awarded, and it's going to be at least as difficult, if not more so this year, because I think that some of the funding available last year is going to be reduced this year from, uh, federal health and health and, uh, health, uh, federal health and housing services. Uh, so the current director, uh, Mara Drew has resigned, she's found other employment. And, uh, so the, we decided not to hire another director until and unless we were sure that we were going to have funding for the coming fiscal year. So that was a Thrive meeting. Uh, let's see here, today, the Pioneer Commission is meeting today at Law Street at four P M this evening. And I believe we have an ICAP insurance meeting tomorrow afternoon. That's just to meet the people at ICAP who run ICAP and, uh, the, listen to what they have to tell us about the property and casualty insurance program that Lee County now has. That's it.
I was on vacation with the. Been seeing mountains and animals, but, yeah.
Just checked out for a whole week, that's crazy.
Yes.
Kind of nice. That would be nice, yes.
Those are reception out there.
Yeah, that would be great. Uh, let's see, hi, the opioid committee, uh, and I sent notes to all of you about that. Um, and I have fielded a phone call or two, um, regarding the coverage of, of that, um, in the media. Uh, let's see, we had an early childhood education center meeting out at, um, at Lee County Economic Development. And, um, it was really encouraging because, um, superintendent's plus support staff from all three district, school districts were attending that meeting. And so to see all three of our public school districts at the table, literally at the table in person, interested in discussions about early childhood was, um, really exciting. And so Emily's, um, moving forward on drafting some plans for that in the event that federal groups come through. Um, that we follow twenty, twenty-two B action on that, it, it all takes years. But, um, excited to see, see those all working together. Um, conservation tour was wonderful, really excited for, um, not only what's already happened, but plans and potential for the future. I think we've got a lot of opportunities and, uh, definitely a great asset to our area. Um, the building meeting, um, we are on schedule and on budget. It's hard to keep saying that because.
That's pretty amazing.
It's amazing.
Nobody couldn't predict.
A project on, of this scale, um, yeah, it's pretty exciting. Um, I, I am a little cautious about the whole U S E A and C S P G.
It is, they're on the furlough right now, so we're, nothing's happening with them.
We're, we're not, not getting money from those entities. Hopefully those will be honored once things are up and running again, but that's kind of on my radar, um.
But to, to note, the money has already been authorized.
I know that.
So it's, it's not that.
But other federal monies have been rescinded after being authorized. So until the money is actually in our account, I'm being cautious and concerned.
Yeah, I think there are a lot of contractors all across the country who are going to be working without being paid for a while.
It, it's concerning, it's concerning. So just keep an eye on it.
Sent, sent an email and all he got back was, uh,
Automatic.
Yeah, so there's a number there to write a check.
Yeah.
I think Matt Schenert had gotten ahold of somebody and said, I think we're promoting.
Right. Yeah, so keeping an eye on that, um, good thing we're in um, a position to be able to maintain as we go and, and then get those reimbursements, so. Uh, we, at last notice, we're waiting on a flagpole and two of the counters and the signage for the building. Um, the signage appears to be the, going to be about the last thing in. Um, partitions are going up a week from now, Monday and Tuesday. So that's exciting.
And we have bills that will be on for next week. We got them late Friday, so I didn't want to run into the agenda.
They were, they were very late, yeah.
Is there anything, uh, with landscaping going forward, or are we just going to put that on hold for now?
I haven't heard anything more on the topic.
So Mark's here, that is.
And Mark's, I, Mark was not at the meeting, he was online. I haven't heard anything more on the topic, and Mark said, Mark was not at the meeting, he was online, um, but I haven't had a chance to talk to him. So I, I have a note right here, Mark Landscape, question mark, so it's still on the list, um, but I don't know where we're at with that. Um, I attended an all-staff training for Community Action Agency, just a big reminder of, of everything that Community Action does in our communities, it's pretty amazing. Um, they've got a four-county area, weatherization, they do about forty homes a year. Um, energy assistance, sort of like heat, four thousand applications in a fiscal year. Um, in addition to WIC and Head Start and rental assistance, food pantry, housing assistance, they just do a great job, they're.
Okay.
No, they're not funded, totally funded, C P G is their biggest funding source.
Yes, okay, yeah.
Oh, okay. Yep, so always good to attend those and, and hear the good work they're doing. Um, Board of Health meeting, they're getting excited for the move, continuing to downsize and clean out and organize and consolidate and get ready for that.
Yeah, for ourselves.
Having crotch color, scrapping, you know, things like that. Um, they did, uh, note a big shout-out to our county I T department, that they've been very, very helpful, not only in recycling old outdated equipment that they don't need anymore, but also that they now are completely transferred over to our county server. And that's going to be a, an every month savings in, in not having to take drink services for their, um, use of their server and data support. So, kudos to our I T department, um, and no COVID vaccines, this year, these have to be purchased in advance.
Really?
And we don't really have a huge high demand, and now you have to have a prescription, and there's just a number of barriers to that process. Um, but they will have the flu vaccines as, as normal and all of that. Um, Gary already mentioned the county-wide forum on Thursday. Um, also, Kiakuck, there's a few public forums coming up regarding the, this fall's election. Um, Monday, the thirteenth, at six o'clock at City Hall, will be the city positions, the mayor and city council, um, delegates. And then the following Monday, uh, the twentieth, at six P M. at the middle school, will be the school board meeting. So, um, good opportunity to have a, a chat with those folks that are running for public office in Kiakuck the next two weeks.
You know what, I'm astounded, really, just in the last election cycle, this off-national election cycle, the amount of people, I think it's, it's awesome.
It's amazing the interest we have for local elections.
Yeah, the people are getting, the people are getting involved.
Yeah.
I think we've got five, five.
Five.
Five in Fort Madison and we're in Kiakuck, they're just for mayor.
Four, five, and three.
One of, one of the candidates turned out is a senior in high school.
I know.
So I, I think that's a lot.
How exciting.
It is, it's just.
He's speaking to the Lions Club today.
Nice.
Yeah.
Roy Wood Small.
That's it. That is awesome. Yeah, because usually those elections are very small turnout, so hopefully it's more this year.
Thirteenth and twentieth, two Mondays in a row. Thirteenth at City Hall, twentieth at middle school.
I don't know when they are, we're. Do you check? Yes, or you would know, yeah.
Sixteen?
The sixteenth, yeah, October sixteenth is the, of the forum, for us.
For school or for everything?
I think it's just mayor.
Oh, you guys know.
You know where?
I think it's at the hall chambers.
On the sixteen?
Sixty, six o'clock.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I have, I'm familiar, so did the ICAP Zoom, it was all about.
I was on it.
Were you on it? Yeah, it was like, it was long, um, yeah, it was just about claims and how to do that. So, you know, it's a brand new company, so it was, you know, a little bit different than what, what we used to do. And so I did that, and then I also did the conservation tour and kind of everybody's covered that. But I, I just wanna point out the most important thing that I took from it, other than everything looks great, is that Heather is always out after grants. She, she doesn't do all this with taxpayer money, she is, and, you know, you just have a very good way of finding money. For those projects, so, yeah, it's great, so, and this week I have a rescue part on the I C A.
Heather also has a, uh, a charitable, uh, foundation support.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Speaking of that, I think, uh, health department, friends of Lee County Health Department also, uh, approved recently some money for the move.
Yep, I recorded on that two weeks ago.
Yeah, you can say that, yeah.
How much was that?
A lot, a lot, a lot.
It'll cover all moving expenses and some stuff that we.
Plus supplies because of the move, yes, they're completely covering it.
That's awesome, yeah, that is, very nice.
You said you were gonna cover the zoning issue?
Yeah, I was just getting to it, um, I contacted, um, Tim had given me this, that he had attended through the city. So I contacted Lou because he, he does our township training, so I'm kind of familiar with him, and came back with, um, they do, they will do a three-hour session, and it's just the basic principles of land use, planning and development, things like that. But there is a cost, it's nine hundred dollars, so, I could put that on the agenda, the. Or do, yeah, because, you know, I had also talked to Mike at, um.
Regional planning.
Regional planning, like, and it's gonna be a while till they can get to it, because they're very busy right now. So, I mean, it's, yeah, so well, I've, I've been putting on the agenda next week if there's appetite for it, okay, we can send those.
Could we get the same information from regional planning for fewer dollars?
I, yeah, I just, it, it's gonna be a while for them to get to us, so that's, you know, that's up to you guys.
And, and they, they actually do reach out to, that's who I was.
Is it?
I was saying.
I was saying, yeah, so, that's who they go to to get their information to, I believe.
Alright, so.
Make, yeah.
So, I mean, I don't know, he didn't say when he could get to us, but.
I can guarantee you this will be more comprehensive.
Yeah, yeah, because Tim's been.
Three hours, it would be a different meeting and it wouldn't be as.
Okay, I'll get it on our agenda next weekend, okay, that's all I had, and you gonna have anything else? That's okay, we'll go in, Ginger on at ten twenty-five, send stuff to sign, and then we do have a department head workshop today. And then Ginger and I have an conference, uh, with the state auditors.
Yay. Always fun times.
Oh, I had to run in with my hedge term. I'm very, very lucky.
Oh my gosh.
Super lucky.
Did hedge term make it?
Yeah, I actually did, I, you're not the first person to ask me that.
Didn't throw it?
I didn't, no. Took me a few minutes for my brain to let go.
But you were getting hurt.
It was, it was still running and I, yeah.
I usually have to buy other stuff, stuff like that.
Oh, and actually, I had to re-sign that, because Erica brought in a new one. Someone signed that one. So, the names that signs the signature page and the workshop's about.
Man, it was very exciting.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. She's been, yeah, nice.
Decent, very.
Decent announcement, yeah.
I know my son had considered putting in a ditch, that's gonna be nearly a night. He's my child, it would not have been nearly that much, so.
Absolutely turn off.
Well, that's the thing with sealed bits, you just don't know. Yeah, yeah, you don't wanna weigh more than you need to, yeah.
Quit recording.
So now we got your art store.
It was so fun.
It was fun.
It was really fun.
Yeah, I'm more flexible than you are, so you figure out.
Tuesday's birthday, Friday afternoons.
Joyce really enjoyed it.
It was so fun.
Okay, here's the new one to go.
Yeah.